Okay, you remember the rules. Francine's gonna do the timing. Uh, when you have thirty seconds left, she'll raise her hand to give you an idea to kinda wipe it down. When you get to, uh, the close, uh, she'll let you know. If you keep talking forever and ever, I'll kinda move over and push you out of the way.
Okay, let me go ahead and introduce myself. My name is Mario Quintana. I'm a lifelong resident of the city. I grew up here in La Colonia. Um, I just wanna give you the reason why I ran, and some of you have heard this story. You've been in a couple forums already. But I put my papers on Valentine's Day. And the reason why I put my papers on Valentine's Day, because I have a seven-month-old daughter. And I love her so much that I gotta put myself out here and run for office. Before that day, I had no intention of running. And when you look at a special election, you know, I didn't jump in the race last time. You know, I had, I just had my child, and I wasn't looking to do it, really. But ultimately, sometimes you've gotta really set everything aside and jump in the race for the right reasons. And when I think about her, I think about me and my wife, we're looking for a home. We're looking to make a life here, uh, buying a house, what program she's gonna be involved in. A lot of people are going through similar, similar, uh, issues, or trying to find a home, worried about their families, where they're gonna, where they're gonna set up. And when you look at it from that perspective, you look at the city of Oxnard overall, the dynamics and the problems that we have, um, you look at our youth, our gangs, and all those, all those issues. That's one of the biggest issues going up in, in our community. And, uh, for me, you know, I've been involved in politics for a little while. I don't feel like I'm necessarily prepared to run. I would've liked to have waited. Sometimes you don't pick the time, the time picks you. And, uh, you know, I've been involved with this club, I've been involved with LULAC. I fought for people at the city, city council. I fought for people at the school district. I fought for people's jobs, I've advocated, uh, you know, I fought for services. I've been a little league coach since I was seventeen years old, I'm coaching now. Uh, I do these things because somebody did them for me. Growing up in Colonia, um, you know, all my friends were gang members. And the reason why I made it out was because of others. So that's where my belief and core belief in community stems from. Because it takes a community or it takes a village to raise a child. We've heard that before, but it is true, and never it wasn't more true in my case. And I'm here today because of it, college graduate, and I made it out of that neighborhood. And I, I stand here before you because I wanna be able to give back and do the same things. Uh, you know, I fought for Spanish simulcast of our city council leaders. And my justification for fighting for that primarily is because that Spanish-speaking community here in the city of Oxnard is too large to be ignored, and we need to do some outreach there. And we, when we get them moving, uh, we all move together, that's what people have to understand. I fought, uh, in Colonia, there was two roads that were gonna be closed. Uh, there were, there were, there were, would've been detrimental to the quality of life and the businesses there in that community, and we got it, we got them, we kept them open. Um, I founded a nonprofit organization, uh, I founded it, it's called Divergent Through Athletics, to help get our kids off the streets. So I've shown a total commitment to community, and that's what I wanna bring to the city of Oxnard.
Number two. Actually, this says zero, I hope that's not pathetic. I'm gonna read this, uh, this is a, well, an award I got for when I, uh, filed a lawsuit against the city of Oxnard for violating the Brown Act. Uh, two thousand five. Uh, "I've been active in the city, trying to make it better for every possible citizen within my power to do it." And, uh, I can't say I've been terribly successful, but I have accomplished some, some things subtly. But this starts, the first sentence is, this is a statewide organization, by the way. Californians are aware. Every should, every city should have a watchdog like Oxnard's Martin Jones." Nice words. Then it goes on. "The longest ROT face lately were in the prospect of suing the Oxnard City Council." "The court did not give Mr. Jones all he asked for, but neither did it agree with the city that packing so much business into secret discussions accorded with the Brown Act, even if it was for Oxnard business as usual." Uh, "In particular, the court ordered that future meeting agendas needed to let people know all the parties and properties up for dealing in closed session conferences." So, there is an existing injunction. Uh, I will say that my lawyer, there was an award in my name, my lawyers got the money. They were very disappointed, I might add. One didn't wanna talk to me for two years, but nevertheless, he's relented. Um, it's, uh, it's, it's a long road when you decide to sue a city over some issue. Uh, we did win. My lawyers got the money, I got temporary satisfaction, and that's the extent of it. Nevertheless, uh, that was two thousand five. On last night's agenda, what is this? One big, yeah, last night's agenda, Mr. Cameron, Director of Finance, talks about the golf course. In two thousand two, I filed a complaint with the civil grand jury of Ventura County. That led to three consecutive investigations by the civil grand jury. Each time, now that's, uh, two thousand one, filed in two, the fiscal years two, three, three, four, three, five. But nevertheless, the golf course is a constant drink. My point is, he says a million seven, uh, I think it's been like averaging eight hundred thousand dollars for like twenty years. In any event, I think it shows my experience and, uh, my dedication to trying to make the life better for all of the citizens, and I'll talk about the theater and its subsidy later. Number three. It's all a surprise, we don't know what the numbers are when you stand there.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Arthur Valenzuela, but I prefer to go by AJ Valenzuela. Uh, currently, I sit as the student trustee for the Ventura County Community College District, representing over thirty thousand students from Moore Park, Oxnard, and Ventura College. But I'm also the president of the California Community College Association of Student Trustees, representing two-point-four million students to the state legislator. The reason I decided to run was because on November sixth of this last year during the election, like, November fourth, November sixth, uh, sorry, November sixth. And I was canvassing the trailer parks in La Colonia of Oxnard, and I thought, wow, this city deserves better. It's, I personally was born into South Oxnard off of Cedars, on, off of Savior's Road, onto Cedar Street. And then my family progressed into downtown Oxnard, onto F Street, and onto North Oxnard recently. Uh, my family has had roots in, uh, Oxnard since its beginning. Uh, my great-grandmother was actually a midwife for Ventura County. Uh, my grandparents started two local businesses here in Oxnard, uh, El Tapatio nightclub and the, uh, Eldorado restaurant, uh, back, back before. And so my family's had roots, um, here as farmers and business leaders. And also, my dad's had a family, uh, Chumas roots, where I've been here basically for generations, along with my family, my dad's had a family being longshoreman. And a reason I believe I would be a good candidate is because I have experience with, uh, sitting on a governing board for Ventura County, uh, representing these thirty thousand students. Uh, I know what it takes to, to go through these agendas, read through the critical information, and make sure this, the residents and the citizens, sorry, make sure the residents of Oxnard are represented accurately.
Moving right along, number four, please.
Good evening, everybody. My name's Manuel Vazquez, uh, candidate for the city of Oxnard special election. And first of all, I wanna thank the Good Club for putting this forum together to give us an opportunity to speak to everybody, um, about our views, and so everybody can get an opportunity to see them. Um, I've been a lifelong resident of Oxnard, I moved here when I was four years old. Uh, I graduated from the University of California, Santa Barbara, and currently I'm a director, uh, for an after-school program, and I direct, um, organizing those services in schools across Ventura County, and we serve hundreds of students every year. Uh, my main priorities as a candidate is I want a city that, that governs for the people, one that's constantly, consistently reassessing the programs, making sure that everything's running efficiently, so that, you know, the funds that we have are being used effectively for the programs that are intended to. Um, so constantly reassessing departments, the programs that are funded, and that way we can, you know, do more with what we have. Um, I also, you know, want the city to be more equitable in the way that they distribute resources across Oxnard. Um, I mean, just driving through Oxnard, you see the difference in neighborhoods, and, you know, those striking differences shouldn't be, we should be investing, um, equitably across the board. In addition to that, I think that the, um, state should also reassess the way that we're growing. Uh, I don't think that we should continue to just expand outward without any control. We should definitely just, you know, reassess what type of city we are, and, you know, beautify the communities that we do have now before wanting to expand outward even more. And I, that's just, uh, a little bit, you know, more control on that. And I also think that we should invest more time with the youth of Oxnard. I mean, the youth is forty-two percent of our population right now, uh, age twenty-four and younger. And, uh, you know, the investment that we have in them is gonna dictate the future for our own city. So, those would be my priorities for the city of Oxnard to elect a city council member. And I think I'm, you know, a good candidate for the job. I think I'm the candidate for the job because I've, uh, grown up in the city. I live in downtown, currently live in South Oxnard, and I have the experience of, you know, what a regular citizen of Oxnard goes through. And, um, we would have like a, a better representation of what we have in the city. So, this is June fourth, I hope for your support, and thank you for your time.
We're halfway. Number five, please.
Hi, Robert.
Uh, good evening. Uh, my name's Orlando Dozier, and first I'd like to thank the Good Club also for inviting me here. I always like speaking at the Good Club, it's good people, good art, and, uh, it's just a good feeling. Uh, and side note, I'm an artist myself, so I, I really do admire the work, and I already know that, that San Tana is not for sale, so I'll move on from there. Uh, the reason why I'm running for city council is I ran back in November, and, uh, what got me involved was I lived in River Park, and I watched the development of my neighborhood, and I watched how the city made decisions that impacted my neighborhood, and how those decisions were made without, uh, a vested interest in the homeowners and the stake owners, that the people that had already laid out their money and laid roots into this community. Uh, so that got me into local politics. It's interesting to, to, to listen to the, uh, the other candidates, it's, it's enriching to hear the, the grassroots and, and the heritage of the city, and how it connects people. I, I, I think that's very important. It shows, uh, your dedication to what you're doing and, uh, your commitment to your city. However, I, I'd like for everyone to take a moment, to take a step back, and to look at us for our qualifications, because the city of Oxnard needs, uh, people that have certain qualifications for the things that are coming up. At this, at the, uh, forum that they just had recently, uh, where they were laying out the strategic plans and so forth, um, the, the person that was, uh, conducting the session, the professor, there was something that he said that kinda stood out to me, that he said that strategic planning involves allocation of resources that eventually come down to a budget. And the reason why I bring that up is because, uh, the mayor has already stated that in the next ten years, Oxnard plans has spent about two-hundred million dollars. And that money is going to be spent on big projects. Uh, and I think that we need to look at council members that have the experience and expertise to manage those big projects from cradle to grave, and that's what I offer this city. So, once again, I'd like to thank you for inviting me, and I look forward to, uh, letting you know my other plans. Thank you.
Before we move to the next one, we've had two reminders, but I'll give you a number three reminder just in case it's necessary. Turn off your cellphones, please.
My cellphone is off. Uh, good evening, everyone. My name is Vince Behrens. Um, my family's been here a hundred years, so I think I qualify to hang out in the city of Oxnard. You never get a chance to do it a second time, but in four months, so it doesn't happen very often. And I was quite proud of the last election. There was a sense that there was things moving forward, and, uh, I was proud of the president, I was proud of, you know, the Koch brothers going down, and there was quite a few pluses there, and I was quite, uh, happy by that, because there for a while, I've been becoming the angry white man, and I get a little tired of being the angry white man. Little history of myself, I am a business owner in the downtown. Uh, my family's been involved in politics for the longest times. Um, I would love to serve on the city council. I agree with, uh, the four candidates that are on there as we speak. Uh, I live in the same neighborhood, the enclave, as we call it, F Street, uh, as the mayor and the ex-mayor, Brian, and, uh, we have a regular conversation among ourselves. I walk home with the mayor every Tuesday night, and, uh, we discuss what happened on that Tuesday, and so it was quite interesting to see in that walk home what happens. Um, the reason I decided to run, I was very, very frustrated with the last city manager, not the current one. Karen is, Karen is the theater, I'm the side, I have no, we'll beat with her. My problem with the last city manager was that every time I had a conversation, I tried to get a conversation with him, we never got anything done. The reason I had tried to get a conversation with him, ten years ago, we decided to turn the downtown around. Uh, at that time, I did have brown hair, and we decided that at one time, we did not wanna grow old in the downtown. Board broke and, and, uh, out of our minds. So we decided to start a downtown district. In that downtown district, we raised over six-hundred thousand dollars. And that six-hundred thousand dollars is to promote the downtown. So at one time, we used to put on a parade, but we still put on the parade, the tree lighting, all those kind of events that the city should've been doing and chose not to. I was very frustrated with my city manager, because these are the things that I really wanted to have a conversation with him, because we made them look good. The challenge was, is that there was a timeframe in the last seven years in which we basically had to sit down and figure out where the, where the city was going with all the stuff that was happening with the, with the scandals and the, and the DA report and the stuff that was happening that we had no control over, but unfortunately, we lost a lot of good time. A lot of good time is wasted. I'm not even too sure if I'm really all that mad about the fact that there was monies that were lost. I'm just more mad by the fact that we lost things, and we should never have lost enough of time. We could not keep back that time. So, I'm sure we'll have more questions, and I'll answer them as best as I can. My name is Vince Behrens, running for city council, I want to be on the fifth seat.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Joanne Olivares, and I'm happy to be here. I was born and raised in Oxnard. My parents were born and raised in Oxnard. My parent, my grandparents have been here since the early nineteen hundreds. We had businesses in, in Oxnard. But my passion, uh, for the city, for the community, comes from what my father instilled in me. My father was a businessman. He, uh, passed away all too young. But he brought cable TV to Oxnard in the late nineteen sixties. He was a businessman, but he was also a community man. He cared about education. He committed himself to the volunteering in this city. He would run candidates. He never was the candidate, never wanted to be the candidate, but he ran candidates that he believed in. I've known Doc Lopez since I was about five years old, because I grew up around candidates. My father also served on the planning commission back in the late sixties. And that's probably where I get my passion for being involved, you know, in the city. And I'm not a politician, nor do I care to be a politician, because I don't think that's what the city needs. I think the city needs someone who cares, a lot of someones who care, and a lot of us do. I am very concerned with bringing back Oxnard to the people. I think that we have to evaluate our staff and our budget. And I think that's what's missing right now. We have deficiencies that people don't look at. They don't even work under that concept. And that's not the employer's fault, that's the leader's fault. So those are the areas that I do wanna get into, once I take that fifth seat. And, um, there will be more to come. It's just the beginning of the, of the questions, and I, I hope that you'll consider me. I do have a bachelor's degree in business from California University and a master's in organizational management. I've been in human resources for the last thirty years, and I think I can bring a lot with me. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Bert Parolo, and I'm running for Oxnard City Council. Number one, I'm proud to live in the city of Oxnard. I ran during the last election, and I surprised myself that we did as well as we did. I think I am the best choice for the city of Oxnard for various reasons, I'll give them on. Not because of an ego, not because of anything that would be, shall we say, detractor, detracting of this candidate, myself. I've been involved in the neighborhood system, I've been involved in the neighborhoods system, I've been involved in issues of health, safety, and welfare in the city of Oxnard. I'm the only candidate that's received the tri-county labor endorsement for the tri-counties, Ventura, Santa Barbara, and San Luis Obispo, ninety-three thousand union members strong. We're looking for more union membership endorsement. That is not the reason why you should vote for me. The reason that I would appreciate that you voted for me, my wife got me involved in this neighborhood council. I've been in this Oxnard area since nineteen fifty-two. My family has roots in this area, I intend to stay in this area. The reason I'm running for the city of Oxnard were health, safety, and welfare issues that got me involved in a neighborhood council, that carried me through involvement with other neighborhood councils, and carried me involvement with trying to help other neighborhood councils to this day. The issues that the other candidates have addressed, and I'm grateful that there are other candidates running, and I'm grateful that there's other candidates bringing issues, and it shows that there is an interest in leading the city. The issues that the candidates have addressed boil down to a couple of things. Can we pay for what we want? Do we know what we have that we can use to pay for it? When we have the current situation, within the last couple of years, that the individuals, that the elected officials can hire, there's only two. The city attorney and the city manager. When they have made decisions, and they have given information to the leadership of this city, the elected body, the mayor and the four council members, that have led them to believe certain situations, and we find out in the last three months that the city of Oxnard has misstated four-hundred-plus-million dollars of money in their budget. And not one elected official asked a question about that, not one. The public's asking questions. Following meetings, the answers come back to the public, well, it was actually a mistake. It's only three-hundred-and-eleven million dollars. And it's like, you know, that's, that's a serious issue. The reason to run is because you need somebody who's honest, will perform, will be held to those same standards that he's requesting, and you need a value for what you're getting. I believe that I will bring that to you. I'm open to questions. I would like you to look at my website, my flyer in the back. The issue of the Spanish simulcast, I was heavily involved. That's why this is in Spanish and in English. The issue of neighborhoods getting important feedback from the city of Oxnard. Thank you very much.
Was that number eight?
I was number nine.
Number nine. Somebody snuck in on me here.
Well, we start from everyone.
Um, and what we're gonna do is, in, in reverse order, uh, I'll read the rules one more time. Uh, some of you have already covered that, and that was, uh, each candidate gets two minutes to state their top priority and how they will accomplish or move towards that goal. So those of you that have already stated your top priority, uh, you're halfway there. You can talk about how you're gonna accomplish that or move towards that. If you wanna, if you haven't and you wanna do that, now's the time. But, uh, Bert, in reverse order, please.
The top priorities of my candidate are, you need to find out where you stand financially. The city has made three major mistakes. They've accepted all the debt for the redevelopment agencies. Ladies and gentlemen, you pay attention to what's gonna happen with the redevelopment agency in the city of Oxnard's debt. You pay attention. You're gonna be shocked when you find out what transpires with the city of Oxnard. There needs to be a citizens-involved committee. Ideally, there would be an auditor controller for this city, but there needs to be a blue-ribbon citizens-involved committee of retired people that have experience in financial matters to get to the honest answers to the city of Oxnard. When we make a commitment, can we fix the streets? Can't we fix the streets? Do we take measure-all money and do it for, with, do with it as items that were not appropriated? Do we backfill a general fund? The second thing is, we need to have a city manager. We need to have a city manager that's honest. We need to have a city manager that we can count on to tell us the truth. And the third thing, we need to have a city attorney that does not hire an outside accountant. A city attorney who then informs us that the entire city of Oxnard's case, for eight million dollars to come back to this downtown, he stated it in a successor agency meeting, open public meeting. He didn't think the document would stand up in court, and we paid two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars for this individual's service. We need to have something happen differently. I will do my best to encourage two other city councilmen to help me get that straightened out. One individual cannot fix the city of Oxnard, but one individual can be a voice that brings these things to the attention and puts some spine into the other individuals. Thank you.
Actually, we didn't have an eight, remember? That's what confused me, so now we're down to number seven, I guess, it would be.
I have a platform, and I mentioned it earlier. Budget and staff efficiencies. I think we need to implement a system that will support the areas of being able to find out where these monies are going. Really allow the, the staff to provide a service that the, the citizens deserve, because this, this company, this, uh, city belongs to the citizens. I think that one of the other areas is, we need jobs in the city. My personality is a very positive personality. So I try to look at these things and see what we can bring. We have, we have a city council, we have, it's almost new. The only person that is on there, in terms of, of the, the other ones that have left, and the whole DA reporting, all of that, they're gone. I think we need to move forward. I think we need to be positive, we need to look at the, the areas that can move us forward, and we need to start now. Yes, we need to look at the budgetary, the, the areas that we're overspending, and I think a lot of these efficiencies will be addressed, a lot of these areas will be addressed once we do that. But we need to move forward. We need to look at our city and say, if this is my family and this is my home, what can we afford to do? We can't afford to do everything. So we need to really look at all the areas and treat it as if this is our home. What are we gonna cut out? I know that we have our children, they want the parks, the soccer field, I saw that last night, but what do we have to cut out? The citizens deserve a Oxnard that's better.
The number one priority is to get the city manager. The city manager determines and can, and can actually not do things that you've asked of that city manager to do. I found that out the hard way. A city manager is somebody that you want, that has got the skills in accounting, has the ability to have a conversation with the, the citizens of Oxnard, has the ability to make sure that when the, uh, when you have a conversation with him, that you get the answer that you want in return from phone calls. The second one is, is the budget. When we go back to the budget, you don't know what you can do and not do without that budget. If we don't have the software in the city to make it happen, the up-to-date stuff, then let's figure out a way to make it happen. I cannot make decisions unless I know exactly what's going on. The third thing is to change the perception of the city. After going through the DA investigation, after seeing what happened, dragging us through the blood on this kinda stuff, I understand that the perception of the city, that it is not healthy, that it still has the gang problem, that all these kinda things are happening. We are in much better shape than we've ever been before. Unfortunately, that perception is that we're still not a safe city, and that is not something that we wanna have. The third thing, or the fourth thing is that we have a lot of huge pluses. We have Ormond Beach, we have six museums, we have a performing arts center. We have so many pluses that we have never been able to really pull them together, because there's never been anybody in the city to make that come together. And that is a huge, huge flaw in the city, and that is something that needs to be addressed. Also, there needs to be, we need to work on the branding program and just changing and making the city fun again. Thank you.
Number five, halfway now?
What I would do for the city is, uh, I spent twenty years in the Air Force. Fourteen of those years I worked as a budget analyst, cost analyst. I spent- I spent seven years in corporate America working for Lockheed Martin. I was a cost and schedule analyst. And right now, I'm a budget analyst, I work on the base of Fort Wyman. What I would do is bring all those skills to bear on making sure that as Oxnard spends this two-hundred-plus million dollars over the next couple of years, that those projects come in on time and under cost. My first, that's my second priority. My first priority is to take care of the here and now, to take care of issues that are affecting the citizens right now. That ranges from, last night, there was a big issue with the soccer fields. I mean, how do we go about providing soccer fields to so many kids and keeping them actively involved? And yet, not overwhelm the system where you have baseball and other summer sports that will be impacted. So those types of things, I think those issues can be addressed by bringing citizens together, bringing city hall personnel together, and getting committees together, expanding the volunteer system. I would look at expanding city core to include some of the citizens that wanna volunteer their time and effort to take care of fields like that. And the third thing is, we need a quarterback. We gotta hire a good city manager that will step us through and make sure that city hall does what it needs to do. Thank you.
I think the top priority is definitely how we allocate our budget because it really dictates what else we can do with that. It would start with first reassessing what we're using the budget for. Like they said yesterday, there was, you know, a lot of people that came from the community to voice their concerns about the conditions of the soccer fields and, you know, the number of soccer fields that we have. And, you know, there's six-hundred teams, just youth teams, that use forty-six soccer fields. And the answer that we got from the city council was that, you know, we understand your concerns and we'll look into how we can alleviate this. But yeah, we, you know, so we're telling them that we might not have the funds to do these fields, but we have the funds to, you know, fund the one-million-dollar subsidy for the golf course. So just really reassessing what we're using our funds for and which really representative of what the community wants. And from there, I would go on to just, you know, doing a type of audit to the different departments to see if we're actually being as efficient as we can. Reassessing if the programs that we're funding are actually meeting their intended goals and if, you know, they're reaching their ultimate goal. From there, we can at least see what other things that we can address. I address, you know, investing more into the youth. Something that's really concerning to me is when I graduated from high school, not too long ago, there was only about, you know, forty-five to fifty of us that went to university. And then I come back, you know, years later and still similar numbers. So, you know, what can the city do to help that? And, I mean, it's really important for the city in terms of the type of demographics we have for companies that wanna come invest here, or the level of community engagement. So it's really important. It's an investment in its own future. And after we, you know, have a clear view of what we can invest on, we can, you know, address these other issues.
Number three, where are we at? AJ, get it right?
Thank you once again. So on this campaign, I am running three issues on four. First one, being farmland. For the past twenty-one years I've lived here, I've seen that we slowly developed over our agricultural resources. When I was just a little kid, I remember taking my, me and my mom taking my sister to high school. And to our right would usually be these orchards, oranges and other fruits. And now it's Victoria State House right there and more golf courses right there. So what I'm proposing is the, sorry. Because currently, we do have store in effect right now, which is due to expire in 2020. However, where we're gonna do when that time hits, are the store lines going to recede? Or are they gonna stay the same with the way we develop going outward? What I propose is that we would start having controlled growth. That way, we save packaging, we save jobs for growers, packagers, and for transportation, while also at the same time providing jobs for laborers and for clerical services once we start growing up on there, and also housing. The second issue is fairness. Currently, as the strategic plan currently states, budget is our priority and ethics falls second. I can agree with this. You need ethics to set together a budget. You can't just hash away with an axe at the budget, you need a scalpel. And I've shown that I've had ethics in my time in student government because usually when students want to go to Washington DC for, sorry, for advocacy, I've always advocated going to Sacramento where ninety percent of legislation is affected in Sacramento itself for community colleges compared to, just compare to Washington DC. And third is fostering our future. As the student trustee for Community Colleges District, I know our cities need in Ventura County, not just Oxnard, is career technical education and vocational jobs, which can either be nursing, welding, auto mechanics, anything. But thank you very kindly.
Well, this is interesting. I moved from the San Fernando Valley in nineteen seventy, so I've been here something like forty-three years by choice. I have talked to State Controller John Chung twice about the money this city votes. We've got over five-hundred million dollars of debt. We've got the three-hundred-and-eleven million dollars of looking at redevelopment. We're closing in on a billion dollars worth of debt. Not there yet, but there's a lot of gimmicks in the budget. We'll see how that works. But a billion dollars divided among the taxpayers of Oxnard is a lot of money apiece. And I've been in the neighborhood program longer than anybody alive or dead. I've been the chairman of my neighborhood for twelve, thirteen years, vice chairman today, and I was elected to the executive board twice. I've watched this close up for years. The number one priority is to end the corruption in this city. Mayor, no one else that I know of has gone to the courthouse and photocopied the DA's reports. And I sent them out by email. We'll see if anything comes of it. But the mayor, Mayor Holden, admitted lying to the district attorney investigators. And I believe that, and also attached to the hip of the DA investigators was a man named, well, an FBI agent. And I was pleasantly surprised, and he interviewed me in two thousand nine. I was pleasantly surprised to see that his name was in some of the affidavits. He's been there, listening to what was said by members of the staff and public, other public officials. It is important to note that the employees of Oxnard are not civil servants. They're public servants, they're employees at will. They take directions. Hopefully, the direction of the council changes in the future. That's why I'd like to be elected to the council because I can help bring about that change. And that's what we need.
So priority number one for me would be to say no to the self-shore development because I believe that issue negates all the work that was done for the environment, for Ormond Beach. That's something that would be priority number one going in. But as far as the overall priority would be our youth. For me, that's, that's the chip on my shoulder. I feel like we added a gang injunction, you know, we put a lot of resources in the police department. We've done less and less in our communities. We're adding more and more people, but less and less investment in our youth. And as an individual who made it out because of others, because of the investment directly in my community, you look at our biggest issue in the city of Oxnard, it's gangs, it's violence. That's really what it comes down to. That's why people stay out, that's why people don't come and tour here, tourism, bringing dollars here, promoting Oxnard. We can't rebrand ourselves, we can't change our name. At the end of the day, we have to become a safer place. That doesn't mean putting more officers on the streets. That's not gonna get the job done. You wanna get more and more people involved. It's not about just the people that are in neighborhood council meetings. Those are the people that are involved and passionate about it. It's the people that are not showing up to meetings, the people that are not involved in their neighborhood council. That's what we need, leaders that step up and get those people mobilized. Get them fired up for their community, get them to take ownership and responsibility. That would be priority for me because I believe that that's gonna be our direct responsibility. It's not just Tuesday nights, it's not just budgets, it's leading, it's motivating, it's mobilizing. Thank you.
Okay, but the math just doesn't work out for questions, I don't think, because we have two minutes set aside for closing statements for each of them. What I'm gonna do is, there's a piece of paper in here for each one of you, this time there is eight pieces. You can just take one and pass it on, and that will be the order for the closing statement. We will ask the candidates to hang around during the break, so that will give you an opportunity to ask questions at that time. And that will also avoid maybe some of the candidates' supporters that are here to ask questions that might not go on tape. So makes it a little bit more fair and ethical, so. What I wanted to mention as we're passing along here for the order, Greater Oxnard Organization of Democrats. That makes it real clear, we're a Democrat club. There are thirteen candidates running for city council. Some of them belong to the other party. We are a Democrat club, so we want to introduce the Democrats to you. Hopefully, you'll choose a Democrat to elect. The good club does not endorse one Democrat over another. And so that's why we try and provide you with the information so you can make the choice that's best for you. I think that's it. So who got number one?
I did.
Very well, go ahead, two minutes.
Hopefully, it's the same results this June, right? So thank you everybody for, you know, taking some time to come to listen to the candidates, listen to what we have to say. And I just wanna say that I think I'm the best candidate for this special election. I think we started some good momentum this November, bringing in new perspectives, and let's continue on that. I want to, you know, have a better governance, make sure that we are using our resources efficiently, and, you know, not being afraid to dive into departments and making sure that those resources are being used as efficiently as possible. And from there, I wanna give more importance into using those resources to having more equity among the neighborhoods, improving more programs for the youth. And, you know, just investing in this will help our city in the short term and the long term because we need these type of investments to, you know, just continue on improving as a city. And I believe that I'm the candidate for that because I've lived in the city for the majority of my life, very representative of what the general demographic of the city was. I mean, I moved here when I was four years old from an immigrant family, went through this public system, went off to college, and back, so it's, you know, a story that is not very represented in the city council. And I have a good understanding of the community that usually doesn't speak up, so I can be representative of, you know, those people and the city in general. So just having more participation by the city in overall. And, you know, that's what I wanna see, a city that is for everybody, is, you know, honest, transparent, and is using the resources as best as we can so we can, you know, just accomplish more. So hopefully, I can ensure support this June fourth. Thank you.
Number two. Orlando.
Thank you again, good club for inviting us and taking out some time on your busy day to listen to what we have to say. I'm currently a sitting city relations commissioner. I'm currently a sitting board member in my HOA. Last year, I served on my neighborhood council. I've been actively involved in the city since I've moved here, I've been here about seven years. And I see the city growing, the city is expanding. I mean, you can see it from the example, the use of the soccer fields, to the time it takes to get through a Sunday session. It's a lot of issue, there are a lot of things going on. And the city needs to start looking at candidates and looking at council members that can help the city grow, that can manage this growth. I can manage the projects, growing from fifty-thousand dollars or a hundred-thousand dollars to now we're spending millions. The city is going to refocus from developing homes and slowly, we're going to bring in other industries besides agriculture. That equates to a whole lot of big projects coming in. I have the expertise to see these big projects from start to finish. I know how to ask the questions that'll make sure that they stay on time and they come in below cost. I ask for your support this June, and thank you again for inviting me.
It's very interesting as to the financial condition of the city. The debt is very, very great. My goal is, if elected, is to end the cronyism, the favoritism that has caused the misspending of millions of dollars. And I mean millions. We have a sports park piece of land that was appraised at one million dollars, and we paid thirteen million dollars for it. How do those things happen? Well, I know that there's going to be a trial in federal tax court June the tenth. And I know a good deal of the evidence that they have used in their investigation because I supplied it. I know more probably than anybody else in this room about what this city is. It's a general law city, it grew up without council districts and still doesn't have council districts. I needed a lawyer five thousand dollars several years ago to write a petition for court council districts. I've done what I can do as a private citizen. I would like to do more in terms of saving the taxpayers millions of dollars and using it like the infrastructure, the streets, whatever is necessary to make the quality of life better for the citizens of Oxnard.
Okay, who's next? Number four. Go ahead.
Thank you for having us this evening. I am going to stay on course with efficiencies. I think that that's what the city needs. And I think that that has to be number one. I would, I would hope that once we have the efficiencies in place, we, you know, we need to follow the county has embarked on this path. Our local university is embarking on this path. And I think that's what our city needs. I think that there's, there may be dollars hidden there, but we don't know. So the efficiency for me is number one. Efficiency in staff, efficiency in our budgets. And once we have that, we can go out and, one of the second thing would be our streets. It looks sometimes like we're out there in a third-world country, and that's a shame. That's an important piece for all the citizens in Oxnard. You hear it all the time. I hope that you will consider me on June fourth. I feel that I can bring my experience in business, my experience in volunteerism and commitment that I've had in this city. I've been involved in nonprofit organizations, I've been volunteered in nonprofit organizations, Food Share, Rescue Mission, those are the things that are close to my heart. But that's because I contribute in this city. I hope that you will consider me and allow me to contribute, continue to contribute in this city as your city council president. Thank you.
My goal, if I am elected, is to really embark on a paradigm shift at our city council meetings. Being involved the last couple of years, I've, you know, fought for issues, fought for things for people in different communities. And everywhere you go, you get the same argument, you know. At the end of the day, all that really matters is who votes? The more affluent communities. And that's what creates despair and deprivation in the other communities. And unfortunately, those are the communities that are causing us the most problems. What we need are leaders that listen to everybody, regardless of who votes and who doesn't. Because at the end of the day, those people, when we fight for them, they start to start fighting for themselves. We need them. We need leaders that stand up for everybody. And I feel that if I'm elected, I will give a voice to the voiceless. I will stand up for those who haven't had, people stand for themselves, stand for them. My goal is to see Oxnard become a paradise. You know, I want my daughter to have everything, everything that I never had growing up in the projects of Girona. You know, getting here was because of community. Fighting now because I'm a part of that community. And I wanna see opportunities afforded to kids that came in my same situation. Thank you. Thank you.
Whoever gets on the city council has a year and a half to do whatever they want to get done. It's a year and a half, that's it. Nothing after that, you have to get voted back in. So whatever you want to get done, it's a year and a half. That means there's not a lot of money, so whatever you want to get done, you better make sure that you have it organized, and you have it under control, because after that, it's just gonna be same as the normal stuff. Let me remind people that the city, there's two cities in the state of California, Stockton and San Bernardino right now, that are going through an incredible time. You've gotta know what the books are. You've gotta know what the books are, and in the end, that's what really comes down to, what makes a difference. If you don't have a city manager, nothing's gonna happen in the way that you want it to happen. You've gotta have a leadership that's gonna come together, and we have that now in a lot of different ways. I think the perception of the city is slowly starting to change. I sense a difference in the tone of the city, it doesn't seem like there's enough arrogance any longer, you can actually have a conversation with people about it. The perception is that somehow or another we are pulling away from what Bell was, it's a whole different city than what it was before. I could pull at any point in time stakes to live anywhere else that I choose to live. I choose to live in Oxnard. You know, my father died in 88, he worked on the city, you know, if there is a heaven, and if I get there, and if I have not at least given my best shot, his idea of heaven might be kicking my butt on a regular day. So, and that's for eternity. So, you know, I'm not a politician, never wanted to be a politician. I'm a dry cleaner who lives in the downtown, and all I ever wanted to do was to get the downtown cleaned up. And when I say the downtown, it also means the rest of the city. And some of the things that we did to downtown can be taken across through the rest of the city. It's a lot about volunteerism, it's a lot about getting out and knocking on doors, it's about trying to make sure that your kids are growing up in a wonderful society, and it's all about taking care of the old people, right? I mean, that's what community is all about. So, let's sit down and have a conversation about it, and it's the 21st century, we all went to college, so.
Closing arguments. For those of you that don't know me, my background has been involved in neighborhood councils, and then the INCF, which is all the neighborhood council in the city of Oxnard. I've also been involved in flood zone justice, which took on the Homeland Security Department of federal government, FEMA. We were successful, we've been successful, and I've been able to successfully work with people of various economic strata, language, social, and racial issues. There's not a neighborhood that I helped that I checked to see who lived in that neighborhood or if it was a hyperpensitivoting neighborhood before I helped them, not once. The issues, as the candidates have spoken, it's not planning for tomorrow for years, the issues that are facing Oxnard are right now. The two people that we can handle as elected officials are city manager and a city attorney. When we have staff that arrogantly does not answer the questions, I can't, as an elected official, hold that staff person accountable, I can hold his boss accountable. That's going on right now. What's going on right now, when we're being told that the city stands in a problem with money, and no elected official is asking, wait a minute, who knew and when? It's not to hang somebody out to dry, it's what are you gonna do about it? Are we gonna wait till the next election cycle to maybe address those questions? Are we gonna wait till it's more comfortable? Are you gonna wait? Are you gonna wait till it happens in your neighborhood? Are you gonna wait? The issue, this election is expected to be extremely low turnout. The gentleman have already stated, it's the people that vote and don't vote that you get elected to represent. I plan to represent everyone in the city of Oxnard if elected. I hope that you'll vote for Bert Corallo on June 4th. Thank you.
That's everyone, or AJ, didn't I say AJ? You're still left, right?
Yeah, I actually did.
You've got the closing show, but it's not zero.
Thank you again, thank you once again, everybody. So, usually when people want to get something done, they come to me on campus because they know I get things accomplished. When I was vice chair for the region, I put together a regional conference for all students to attend, very high attendance. As treasurer, I was first person in like four years, I actually got some money in the treasury, $3,500. I got that in two months with students, for being president of the Student Trustee Association. I actually reached out to Assembly Member Doss Williams, and he put forward a bill for us, Assembly Bill 447, to give student trustee rights compared to privileges across the state of California. And I know if elected in this position, I will follow through on my priorities for this city. And this election's gonna come down to one thing, it's not about the money or who has the biggest titles. As Cesar Chavez said, it's gonna come down to the people. Thank you very much. Viva Oxnard.
All right. First of all, I want to thank Francine for being our timer. She's our new first vice chair, and she's been responsible for our program, so thanks for going easy on her. And I want to thank the candidates, first of all, for having the courage to run. It takes a lot, really does, it takes a lot of personal fortune to get out in front of people. Out of an hour and a half today, you only got seven minutes, but we tried to give you the most we could as far as time goes into picture story, and if you could please stay around during the break and answer questions with anybody, we'd appreciate it. So how about a hand for the candidates?